Good evening, like to thank you for coming, call to order the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Uh, will you join me please in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Dennison?
Here.
Whedon?
Here.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Present.
Swam?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, accept a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to prove as presented.
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This time I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only, if you'd like to make a mo- or I'm sorry, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
This is money I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can I have roll call please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
abstain, I wasn't present.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with Buchanan Tree Friends. Mr. Brian Murphy. And Richard Martin.
I'm Brian Murphy, Chair of Buchanan Tree Friends. Um, we're going to talk about two topics tonight, one is that an update on the D N R grant we received last August. And then the second is to talk about our fall tree planting. Uh, Richard is going to talk kind of as a bridge between those two topics to give you an update on what we've done year to date. So as you remember, we got a, a grant to do four things. And I'm happy to report that all four of those activities are active. The first was to plant trees, and we've done that. We also got money for removals, and the city is uh, moving forward on that, using outside contractors to take care of some of the trees that we identified were the most posed the most danger. We also uh, received funds to pay for the year's worth of uh, software fees, which is two thousand dollars for the tree, uh, treekeeper software, which is the inventory of all our trees in the city. And we're using that inventory to help identify the trees to be removed, also the bare spots in our town that where we're going to plant trees. This inventory is going to be uh, layered along with the uh, the rest of the city infrastructure, trees are infrastructure. And the fourth thing was training, um, we had our first training session on the uh, on the software. And uh, Deb Perez, city treasurer, has stepped up and has gotten that training, and she's becoming a real advocate on the city staff for, for uh, activity with the trees. We, Rich, Martin, and I are going to, we've been invited to go to Lansing, Michigan on uh, the twenty-third of this month, they're going to have, the D N R is hosting a roundtable. And they want to talk to us and other cities that have received grants. What I found interesting is that there, there's another grant application due at the end of August, which we will submit. Um, in the uh, explanation of the grant, they basically listed the things that we asked for last year and encouraged other cities to do the same thing. The integration of an inventory, a plan for a city, money not just for planting, but also maintenance and removals are critical, and they're interested because we're a small town that doesn't have resources. So how do you, um, how do you accomplish what you can with what you have? And we've been able to get some tools for the city, um, the auger, the watering truck, um, we got the inventory done, now we have the software, we're going to have some training. You know, so we're very happy with the progress that we're making and the city's making on behalf of trees. Um, so Rich is going to come up and talk to you about uh, progress we've made to date. And then I'm going to come back and talk to you about the fall planting.
Richard Martin, nine twenty Chippewa Street, Buchanan Tree Friends. Um, in the spring, let's see, it was about yeah, April thirteenth, I believe it was, we planted thirty-three trees downtown. And that made quite a difference, I was real pleased with that, and then uh, on May eighteenth, we planted fourteen more trees uh, at the south, south end of the high school, all around uh, Phelps Street, Smith Street. Makes it look a whole lot nicer up there. And uh, we'd like to do more, so that's my part.
So to that end, we are planning a fall planting now, we have funding from the Michigan Gateway Community Foundation to do that planting. And our intention is to plant on Third Street, in city-owned property, from here all the way to the Ingersoll Rand owned property, which is at the beginning of the trail. Those are listed as brownfields, so we're here informing the city that that's what we're going to do. And uh, we believe that that will help long-term do it, there's a process called phyto remediation, which uses trees to help remediate land, we know that's a pretty low-risk brownfield, that land that we're going to plant on will never be developed, it's city-owned, it's basically tree lawn. It'll provide shade for the trail and for those exercise stations that were put um, toward that property. We're also going to plant some trees on Dewey Street around um, the west end of Dewey, you know, right, uh, what's that, is that, that's not oak, that's um,
maple?
Is it maple? In the moccasin, yeah. The intersection of moccasin and Dewey. Um, we'll do that same day. So we're excited about it, um, we think that if it goes well and we can uh, identify more, I walked the property the other day, just as a sense of how many we could plant there, we think we, we might probably get twenty trees between here and along Third Street all the way out. And so we're just here to know if you have any questions about that.
Are you going to replace the ones that you cut down on Detroit?
Good question, um, I don't think we have a plan for that yet.
Okay. Well, um, and then I wanted to ask, do we have any plans for putting any more on the common?
We do.
Okay.
We do, we have a couple of, identified a couple of spots there, is that going to happen this year, Rich?
I hope so.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to get some more mature trees there, that'll be more expensive.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and so it's a question of, right now for our fundraising and our budget.
Okay.
But yeah, that's been a, we, we, Rich and I have been talking about that for a couple of years now, we'd like to get that this fall.
Mike Baker has some.
The project that we're getting ready to do is going to go right down Third Street, right?
It is.
So we're sewer main is going out there, so I wouldn't plant anything down here this fall.
Old side of the street?
No, it's on our side of the street, or this side of the street.
Creek side.
If you're planting on that side of the street.
North side.
No, the plan was this side.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we need, yeah, we need to say that.
That's why, that's why we're here.
Yep.
And that's why we, this is why we need a tree plan.
As soon as you said that, I saw a bunch of eyes get a little bit brighter, and I was thinking the same thing.
Well, you know, and that's why we need a tree plan, and we need tree planting uh, integrated with other city activities. It would have been great to have known that sooner, you know, that's just a matter of us, you know, being in better communication. But, so now we'll plant somewhere else, maybe we'll plant on Detroit Street now.
We didn't know till today.
Oh, we didn't.
No.
Really?
Really.
Wow.
This is part of the project.
This is part of the project, that's.
Well, what'll, what'll be great though is a year from now, we could plant there.
Yes.
Right?
Oh, right, yeah. Well, when's that project supposed to come?
Well, it's supposed to be done by
Third, Third Street should be done by May thirty-first.
So next fall?
Yeah.
We'll plan to plant those trees next fall. You know, what's the best day to plant a tree, guys?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, twenty years ago, or today, so, well, thank you.
I knew I was close.
That was helpful, yeah.
How many, uh, how many trees have you got tagged for removal around the city?
Tagged?
Well.
The tree inventory identified a hundred trees that were either of moderate or high risk for removal. And you know, that things have changed, some of those have been taken down already, uh, you know, we don't, I don't, I can't give you a specific answer of how many of those are left. But we're going to ask for removals again in this next grant, we're going to ask for planting, and we're going to ask for renewals.
Do you know how much it costs to take down that great big one?
I don't.
Do you know how much it cost?
Yes.
To take down that monster?
How much?
That's, that's a good deal, that's a really good deal.
Eighteen thousand?
Eighteen hundred.
That is cheap.
Who did that?
It is cheap.
That was pain.
Yeah, pains.
But that was a really good deal for the city.
Yeah, that's a really good deal.
Extremely good deal, because I was thinking six or seven, at least.
Well, I think pain is the only local one anyway, we might as well use them for all of our trees.
So, question on um,
And we don't have really, once we raise the money, our, the idea was just to advocate, you know, that's really the city's business, is removals.
So on these removals, we put in the budget for this fiscal year, um, some sidewalk repair funding. Um, something we want to try to get ahead of across the community at a larger scale as, as we can allocate funding for it, but maybe that's something you could talk about in your grant is sidewalk replacement for part of that potentially, or at least communicate with those homeowners about participating in sidewalk replacement with the city, and you guys could talk about that off to the side, that way you know, these areas were these giant trees that are probably destroying some of that sidewalk, we can do what we did at Victory Park and, you know, loop around. I don't know, just some ideas there, but
Yeah.
we did set some funding aside for sidewalk repair this year, and I'd like to see it get used.
It's great.
Great, thank you.
Do you, do you guys spend much time looking around the cemetery, just out of curiosity? I mean, looking at the trees in the cemetery?
Uh, in the past, the library, or the cemetery, Sexton, I believe, it's called, uh, he's come to me and say, what do you think about this tree, and what do you think about that tree? They identified them, and I just gave them my advice, and they did what they had to do.
Okay, I'm just curious, there's some trees down there that might need some attention.
And those trees were not included in the inventory, you know, there, the inventory, you know, we could probably go in there and up, you know, inventory all those trees, that would take a, quite a crew to do.
Yeah.
But the inventory's great, I mean, if, if, if we had the ability to put it online, we, we could put it online and give citizens access, and they could see the trees that are on their, you know, that are in the inventory, that are in their, their tree lawn.
You might increase your inventory too, if you put it out there, you could do that.
I thought we were talking about like, and trying to get it to communicate with our B S and A.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, there's stuff, there's layers of it, you know, you can have something that's available to the public, that just shows the species, diameter, breast height, and condition.
Yeah.
And then there's other layers of uh, that would be overlaid, like you said.
Do we have the park down there by the creek, south of the high school, out by the dog park, is that all inventory too, or not?
I, I don't believe it is, no.
Probably not. I mean, we do have a wood burning stove though. So we are going to inventory our trees kind of anyhow, because they're pre-standing, they're dead, they'll burn. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, regarding the removal of trees, um, and the placing those in the inventory, so we know what we do have, what we don't have, I worked with Deb Perez this afternoon, and she's taking over that duty. And we're going to get together again next Thursday and work on it.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Rich.
Brian?
Okay, moving down to community development report, Director Rich Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. One item before you tonight that I think will be familiar to you as we have uh, had this before us before, in terms of our redevelopment liquor license uh, district that we have opted into with the state. This is our second application that has come forward by developer to seek a redevelopment liquor license per the state uh, requirements, uh, there is a local government approval um, resolution that's required. It uh, essentially you bless the application that this uh, you're supportive of the application, the application then is sent to the state, reviewed, and hopefully then approved for, in this case, Brookline Enterprises LLC, which is the uh, owner and operator of the new McCullum Livery uh, project, uh, the new boutique hotel, that is uh, under construction at two oh six to, in two oh eight Days Avenue, so. Just need a uh, a motion and approval, and there's a s- a standard form that the state provides, which the clerk will then send off, and we will get to them to make sure that's, this uh, application is advanced.
Where are we at with the liquor license on Front Street?
I'm being told that I, we're just kind of waiting any day for the approval, but uh, I have not actually discussed uh, that in the last few weeks with the owners, but I'd, I'd heard through uh, several people that they're, it appears they're at the last step of the process, so we're hoping that that can be um, approved, and we can get some liquor licenses going by use of this economic development tool.
Yeah, I talked to Joe last week, I stopped down, had lunch, and asked him about how that was going for him, he I, I can't remember if he said he had their inspection, or if it was scheduled, I feel like he had his inspection, so they're hopeful anytime to have it.
I'd asked him like a month and a half ago, and he said he was still waiting for them to come down and inspect, but
Yeah, maybe it's, he's waiting and it's scheduled, uh, I know he's been working on it for a long time.
Just love the state of Michigan.
Okay, I would accept a motion.
Sean will make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dot zero seven slash one seven as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Abstain, business interest.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now, under new business, D P W Building Project Update, and I believe Jennifer Sawyer is here from the Barton Group with an update.
Good evening, how are you?
Hello.
I wanted to stop in and give you the opportunity to ask any questions, give you an update, kind of high-level overview of how the project has been going. We have been quite busy this year, and as you see in the handout that hopefully you have all in front of you, uh, January through June kind of gave you each big milestone that we hit each month uh, to keep the project going. And you'll see the update pictures here in the packet provided, there are lots more, obviously, I chose a couple that kind of went along with this, with this detail. And if there's anything more you ever want, feel free to reach out and ask, we constantly communicate, and there are plenty of reports. Uh, any questions on progress so far?
What are some of the challenges that you've ran into with that site, I know you guys have worked through a handful, but
We have, we have um, overcome quite a, I wouldn't say quite a number, but some significant challenges started with uh, some eagle permitting uh, questions, and the bureaucracy behind making sure we get all of the ducks in a row before we go forward to, to protect the, the city in your interests, so that took quite a long time, once we got over that, we started talking about how that affected the schedule. And so we were going to be digging at a different time in the year than we had originally anticipated, with that, you know, the creek levels are always a high, low, it fluctuates, of course. Uh, we were able to uh, really test out some uh, digging at the South Pond, and fortunately, we did not hit any excessive water in that pond to actually avoiding having to pay for any dewatering there at that time. We did kind of wait until with the last possible moment, knowing that further in the season it'll get more dry, hoping that we'll get that good news, and and luckily that, that worked out, sometimes that doesn't always. And then the usual construction, uh, little details here and there and drawings that maybe weren't specifically clear, things that we found in the ground, we found an old, old tank, um, which really took some, um, it took, uh, musta, with the state is coming in and providing an insurance policy for you to remediate all of the soils and all of the things that you had to do to make it safe for um, use in the future, so, um, that was a really good win for the city as well, so. I think those were the three big ones.
I'm going to ask a question of ignorance, just so that everybody else knows what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Is this part of the D P W project?
Yes, this is the new Department of Public Works building, and the uh, site work and challenges that we faced once we started digging and finding what, what you had saved in there for us.
It's big enough for our fire department too, for future use, right?
I would think so, there are quite, um, there's a very large vehicle bay, I don't know the size of those overhead doors, I believe they're sixteen feet, without knowing exactly the size of your trucks, but we would have to look over that.
I mean, if we had to in a pinch, we could put the police department in there too, it's big enough.
That's for sure.
Okay.
I don't know if Mike will like it, but
Doesn't really matter.
We gotta figure it out.
Thank you.
On the next page, kind of gave you that highlight of what we're looking for here in July, and then the, getting to that final completion. Uh, if, if you've never heard the saying, it's a ninety-ten rule, that ten percent of the project only takes up ninety percent of your time at the end. So there's going to be a lot of uh, moving there on that site in the next two months. We have a lot of interior work coming up, drywall hanging, finishing eventually once all that, that gets taped and muddied, we have a lot of ceiling uh, panels to install, interior paint to continue for the vehicle storage, uh, concrete, floor, ceiling, and once that happens and that cures appropriately, we're able to move in some equipment so you can get off your, your rental charges. Um, before we actually get occupancy, which is a huge thing that, that we've been working through with the uh, building inspector for, so that is also really good news. Uh, we'll be continuing all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing finish installations, uh, specialty equipment, all the lifts and um, tools that Mike has on the list um, to be installed, we've got a wood, wood burner coming up to uh, heat the radiant floor and the big slab uh, area of the vehicle bay.
Where's that going to be placed, exactly?
The, it's in the actual, the, the vehicle bay, where trucks pull in and park so that the, the snow melts and drains away in the trench, in the trench drain.
The stove's going to actually be right there?
Oh, sorry, the stove is outside, we, sorry.
All right.
No, I didn't, I didn't catch that you were talking about the stove, the stove is outside.
Is it set away?
Mm-hmm.
And then is it So it's going to be guarded so that anybody that really doesn't know how to drive a forklift or bobcat, isn't going to tear it up? I mean, I want to make sure that we put the embunkments in that we put in.
We'll have a look at that, I believe an easy solution to that would be to add some bollards, if, if you're worried about someone hitting that, it's a quick, easy, cheap, cost-effective.
Well, I don't even know what kind of equipment you're going to use to load it. Um, I mean, and that's something you're going to have to figure out, because unless it's going to only be one person loading it, and what happens when that person's not around?
Yeah.
We'll talk through what that
We can get as close to guaranteeing it as we need to, because that stove is not going to be cheap.
We'll talk through that process, right now, we're still looking at the final connections that we need for both electrical and mechanical on that unit before we actually press the button and order it, so we have that opportunity now to kind of talk through what that looks like for him and his crew, and make any adjustments before we actually spend any money, so we'll have a look at that, for sure.
Yeah, I was, you know, I, I was pretty excited about doing that, I just want to make sure, I haven't been over to Niles to look at theirs, but I'm going to make sure I make a trip this week to go look at theirs.
That's great.
And see how they've done it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's all about what they're using to load it, what they got to load it, you know, and I'll find that out too.
And what the, where it's loaded to, for, on the unit itself, so.
Right, right.
Any questions on this last final push of the project?
Uh, fire, sorry, if I recall, just tell me if I'm right or wrong, or if we're working on this, but the end of this, we get like a maintenance schedule for the facility, right, to make sure we're on top of what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, between oil changes for the new equipment we buy all the way to when we need to start replacing items on the building.
Absolutely, it is a contract requirement for all big, major pieces of equipment to have an operation and maintenance manual.
Perfect.
I would have to double-check and, and find out what A V B's closeout process is, but between them and us, my expectation is to be able to hand you a warranty book, so you know who to call if something happens, and a maintenance schedule and a maintenance contact list, so you know who to call if something along those lines happened.
Excellent, thank you.
So are we looking to be able to move our stuff out of Ralph's building in July then?
I believe so, that is what we've been pushing for, um, with the, we had a recent mechanical permitting issue that we're still working through. It's almost done, when it is, we'll have a better idea of what we can do on that floor, I don't want to start digging into it if we have to break it up, so.
The drain, the, the water fountain?
Yeah. Yeah, um, we, we believe that we have a, a solution that is amicable for everybody, but the, I haven't heard the in- impact from the inspector yet. So I'll report on that when we actually have resolution.
Okay. Good. Any other questions?
Uh, the next page is kind of just a financial snapshot, so the net, the two filing pages is the data that pulls into that report.
Yeah.
So it kind of just shows you what the building construction costs are, what those contingency funds currently are at, um, what the general conditions and the, the fees that have been paid to date, so.
Bill, I haven't been to a couple of the last construction meetings because I'm, actually have a job now. It, Mike, have you talked to Mike Smedley at all about the lockers he was going to donate? Because I haven't seen him, but I can, I'll get ahold of him. Do, when are you going to be ready for those?
I mean, we can, we can store them anytime.
Take them anytime?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that way they can start getting measurements, and if they need to make any adjustments to the, to the block or anything right now, they can.
Okay.
Well, if that's it, gentlemen, I appreciate your time, again, feel free to reach out if you need anything, we're always here for for you if you need.
Thank you, Jen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, moving down to U S D A, City Manager Tim Lynch and Mike Schwartz from Brian and Newhoff.
Do you want to take this one away? My shirt.
I get so nervous when we spend this much money.
Mike Schwartz, Brian and Newhoff, one seven oh seven, uh, South Park Street, Kalamazoo. Uh, I think probably the next four items is uh, probably covered by me and Tim, but um, so we're kind of on the home stretch of getting close to getting this project off the ground and closing on the loan, so these are kind of the last steps in front of the uh, council before we can actually get, meet up with U S D A and actually sign the paperwork to close on this. Um, so what you have in front of you is the first item, and is the approval of the award for contract one uh, to Camiga and Ru- Roosevelt, um, so back on May twenty-third, the city took bids, there were three bidders on the project. Uh, the little bidder was about ten-five, there was eleven-five and a twelve-five on the bids, uh, we sent that to U S D A for concurrence, um, to make sure that they were cool with everything too. Uh, in the past couple, uh, since the bidding, we went back through and reviewed all the budgets to make sure everything is in line with the uh, the loans that were anticipated back on the original application back in twenty nineteen, so everything checked out on that. Um, so U S D A came back with the concurrence to recommend award uh, to K and R, that's what they, our go-by is K and R, um, because nobody can ever pronounce their names right, including me, I probably screwed them up too. So, there was a condition from um, Andy, uh, Grand Scott from U S D A, that the award be contingent on what I had in my recommendation letter, subject to the availability of funds and the completion of necessary financial arrangements with U S D A Rule Development. So basically it just says you're, close on the loan, all the pay dots, or I's get dotted, T's get crossed, for some reason if something blows up and nothing closes, this project, you know, there's no award of this, so it's uh, recommending award at this point to K and R, subject on, in essence, closing on the loan.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the award to K and R?
Actually, according to Robert's rules, I should probably make that motion, Your Honor, because I was reading up on that, and as a mayor, you probably shouldn't make the motion.
No, I asked if someone would like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I
I need to make that motion.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yeah, yes, excuse me.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm going to put you on the spot before we go on to the next one, just so that we can get some of this settled down around town. Because the water bills, you know, eight percent a year across the board, water sewer, and ready to serve. Can you explain that? I don't care, you know, don't use more than two minutes, but if you can do it in thirty seconds, help us, help us. On the legality of it, you know, and everything else.
So, I believe uh, somebody from Baker Tilly was here last uh, meeting, that went over all the financial pieces of that. So they did the financial um, breakdown of, um, forgive me, I'm not a financial guy, that's why Baker Tilly's involved with this.
Every time I can get somebody else to repeat it though, it just helps.
So typically they look at both your operation and maintenance expenses, your current debt, and then the proposed future debt, and they look at the number of customers you have, how many gallons you use, and they use your rate structure
Right.
to develop, how much do you need to pay for your obligations?
Right.
Um, so however Andy presented that, um, whether it was eight percent a year, or you know, Baker Tilly, I'm not sure if Andy was actually here last, but um, but however they present that, uh, to cover those necessities, both for, you know, operation maintenance, your existing debt, your proposed future debt, and then even probably some reserve, um, and ultimately to have a cash fund, um, so much dollar and then even probably some reserve, and ultimately to have a cash fund, so much dollars in your account that the council is comfortable with, you know, whether that's a half a million, one million, two million, whatever that cash balance is, that's what's typically driving that rate is covering all those items to get to a balanced budget basically.
I appreciate it and I've heard it and I understand it.
Okay.
But now I can tell people, watch YouTube, you know, for the last two meetings, just go watch it.
Yeah, and I, if I didn't quite get that quite right, like I said, I'm not the financial guy.
No, no, I think, I think you did answer what he was looking for. And I think if you look through the packet that we had, you'll see in the contracts that it states, and I don't quote me, generally it says you need to do these things in order to get the USDA loan.
And really those next items, two, three, and four, kinda lay into that was really that question is, what's your obligation? What's your, the legal obligation of that?
Right.
So, carrying into that, item number two is the selling of the bonds. That's Roger Swets, I believe was here, he explained basically this whole thing. It basically establishes an ordinance that gets published in the paper that grants the city the rights to sell bonds to pay for this entire project. And that basically at that point, it's establishing that you will establish rates accordingly to pay for those for the next forty years to pay, make that payment on that bond slash loan. And really what happens is you issue bonds, but USDA buys them to create this loan. So, it's.
Makes sense.
No, thank you.
It's all legal documents that's out there.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Tim, what, or Mike, you can probably answer this quickly too. What was the total, this is one phase of the project, we already got the first phase. What was our ballpark total for the project?
The construction, I think the other construction and the rebid, we came in around four point nine.
Sounds about right.
On construction and then total is around eighteen, nineteen for everything.
Sizily less than we started this whole project.
Yeah, and this was, we rebid the project with the M-dot. We changed the scope back in November, redid some of the downtown landscaping.
Removed it.
Basically removed it, simplified it, so instead of all the pretty nice brickwork, it's, you know, stamped concrete, it's more scoring. It was more of a simplified plan, but still meets hopefully the intent of the desirable downtown.
I think so, we had a nice work session that we go through that.
Yeah.
Kinda, I just couldn't remember where the final finals came together, so.
And there is a spreadsheet that Tim has that shows the whole breakdown. Because you do have M-dot funding, you have some funding coming from Train and Bar for along Third Street for some contamination. There's, but it breaks down your, all your supplemental funding, you know, how much is on the general fund, sewer fund, water fund, et cetera, and then based on each of these contracts.
Thank you.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I moved to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero six slash four three nine, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of additional series of water supply and sewage disposal system junior revenue bonds.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
And then item three and four is the, actually the, kinda the back half of that is where the USDA actually has their own documents for the loans that basically says you will pay these loans when they buy these bonds as part of that. So, there's actually, it's set up as three loans, there's two in water, that total nine million. So, there's a six million and a three million, so that's why you actually have three resolutions. Why they just don't do one, I don't know. And then there's a.
You're not a finance guy.
I'm not a finance guy either, I'm an engineer. And then the other one is for the sewer part around six point, or seven point five, seven point six is the other one, the dollar amounts to cover that, the sewer part of that. So, those are USDA, their standard documents down to the T in there that they'll be assigned and provided at closing.
Thank you, someone like to make a motion on the next resolution, number three?
Also, also move twenty twenty-four dot zero seven slash eighteen and twenty twenty-four dot zero seven slash nineteen USDA loan resolution water.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Can we have roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving down to number four?
Sean, I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dot zero seven slash twenty USDA loan resolution sewer.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll second.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, just for your next steps, so what'll happen at this point is we will send the contracts to KNR. They will obtain their bonds and insurance and sign basically their end of the contract. It'll come back to our office and we'll be scheduling a pre-construction and loan closing. So, at that point, we'll have all the parties there from Baker Tilly and Roger Swets and Dickersons and the, yourself, the mayor, and Tim, and basically they'll have one of those, like it feels like your own set of signing a mortgage type thing where you sign a thousand different papers, but it's the last thing of the checklist. So, there's this checklist that was forty-eight items or so, and it's like, we're now at items thirty-six. So, it's like boom, 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 that all happened at the closing. So, that will be scheduled probably in around four weeks out. And at that point then, we'll start getting a schedule from the both contractors of what they're looking at doing. But from the latest understanding is they're hoping to start at the treatment plant some point after Labor Day and get the sewer up through Third Street basically to City Hall. There's an M-dot permit that does not allow us to cross the creek from, in essence, November through May. So, they gotta.
Did you really find out a reason for that?
The spawning of the fish.
I thought it was the bat.
Yes, that's eagles, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I did for forty years.
So, in about four, maybe six weeks, we should be sitting here in a big old circle having the contractors here, pre-construction meeting, loan closing, and it'll be a glorious two hours as we do that. And then the same time, we'll work with the city to do a reimbursement request because they will actually make their first loan payment or first reimbursement back to the city. So, we'll be pulling all the invoices spent at the time, pulling that all together too. So, a lot's gonna be happening behind the scenes, making sure USDA is all set, everybody's all thing, the ordinance is published, et cetera, and everybody's, you know, crossing their Ts and down their Is to get to that loan closing.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your explanation, sir.
Okay, moving down to item C, a resolution to approve the amendments of the Southwest Michigan Community Ambulance Service Articles of Incorporation. I thought Brian was coming, but he's not here.
He said he would be an attendance.
It's like the second or third time he's been in motion, it's great.
Well, then I move to postpone.
Well.
I would, I mean, as long as we're gonna postpone anyway, well, but he made a motion, so.
I'll second, yeah, I'll second. Can I have some commentary? Because I had a couple of things I wanted to ask him, so maybe if he's watching YouTube, you know, in the next two weeks, he can prepare for this. But one of the things I think with, for lack of a better phrase, the cluster that this has been legally over there, you know, I'd like our, I hate to spend the money on it, but I'd like our attorney to review these articles to make sure primarily if we wanna get out of this, if it continues to spiral into a mess, we have that opportunity to change course, we need to. And then, you know, this adding and or removing municipality ownership and moving into new counties where right now the ownership group has nothing to do with Cass County at this time, but we're spending taxpayer dollars in another county, really rubs me the wrong way, kinda didn't come to any of us for approval. And then layer on top of that, how their budgeting is done and how they can just randomly send us a bill for whatever they want without us approving their budgets, you know, it's only done internally, really grinds my gears for lack of a think. So, I think we need an ambulance service. Is SMACUS the best one to serve us as a conversation we should start having with the county long-term? I don't know the answer to that, but setting these articles up appropriately, if we do need to make a change, I think is warranted for an additional review.
Who is representing the city of Buchanan since Tim Gannus is gone? I was asked to be on it.
I sat in on the last meeting, yeah, and there's, there's just a lot of confusion, you know, with the whole Cass County thing and, yeah, Brian noted that he would be here at this meeting along with, oh god, I can't think of the guy's name, Rick Huff. Oh, Rick Huff was, you know, adamant about the fact that they were looking at it, looking at that in Nile. So, I was real surprised when Brian wasn't here, but they wanted to get this pushed through, but they also need to have a good explanation of what they're doing, what they're trying to do, and how they're trying to do it because the meeting I sat in on was a little bit.
Contiguous?
Yeah, I mean, there are those that run it and those that sit and listen to it.
I attended one meeting, I attended one meeting, and being the person that I am, I just asked a couple of questions. This is, this goes back to everything that we are involved in. We can't reinvent this wheel, we need to get rid of management, it's that simple. It's not a hard thing, I've been down here for ten years and this ambulance service has been this same insult for at least ten years. Nobody wants to say it out loud because he graduated from some particular school or he's buddies with somebody, but nobody will say it at the meetings. And I mean, I'd gladly be on that committee, but then I'd get ran out on a poll probably after the first meeting because they sit around on their thumbs and expect somebody else to do it, but then when somebody steps up, they go, oh my god, he's a lifetime friend, you know, this is not about reinventing the wheel. This is about getting rid of management because this has been a debacle for twenty years, and then they don't show up. This is not the first time they've done this.
Well, I, I mean, I agree with Patrick, I mean, they've had enough legal issues in the past. Would you like to make a motion to have it reviewed by the city attorneys?
Well, Dan's motion has, is on the floor.
Oh, we didn't vote on it yet, that's right.
But I can make a motion after Dan's motion. Real quick though, I did have a nice, I caught Rick Huff off-guard about a month ago, maybe, maybe less than that. We did have a really good conversation about it, but, you know, I, I wanna hear these answers from Brian, not the city manager, Niles.
You're not going to.
Yeah.
Well, let's, can we go ahead and take roll call on?
On postponement?
Yes, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
And then, I really would like to have the attorneys look through it. I don't know, I haven't, I mean, I know that SMACUS's attorney drew it up, but I don't even know who that is.
Why should the city taxpayers of the city of Buchanan pay a lawyer to look at this when we know what the problem is? What is the lawyer gonna tell?
But even if they were to get rid of Brian, my guess is the attorney who is the attorney for SMACUS is still gonna use these.
It's not just Brian.
No, I'm, no, but, just let me finish, I think they're still gonna use these articles of incorporation, you know. My guess would be even if the management changed, these articles would, they would wanna get these through. And I'd rather have somebody look at them with our best interest at heart.
They're trying to fix something that got messed up a long time ago, and they're trying to recreate it in a way where it can be enforced, and we don't even know if it's being recreated appropriately from what was done thirteen years ago or however many years ago it was.
Well, part of the problem is they don't wanna allow the Wajac in even though we're servicing them, and they think they have to have a whole new barn to service the Wajac even though we're servicing the Wajac now. And nobody will say it out loud, and it's all about the workers' convenience, you know, and that's what came up at the meeting I was at.
The meeting I went to, they were, they were tickled that they were actually making money in Cass County.
Exactly.
They were making money.
But they didn't want, they didn't want Cass County sitting at the table.
No, right, I mean, none of it really makes sense, so at any rate, would you like to make a motion?
I do wanna make, I'd like the, I'd like to move to have our attorneys review the articles that were presented related to SMACUS.
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Mianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't wanna pay a lawyer for something that's known to be messed up.
Okay, moving down to D is expenditures, do you have questions about expenditures?
Before we move on to that, are we gonna put somebody on that committee that's actually on that committee?
Commissioner Money here.
You are on that committee? Well, I was asked to be on that committee, but I know I'm a bad boy. Most of the questions, thousand dollars for videos, where are the videos going, you know, to promote economic development? That was one thing that was, and that would be a question for Rich, you know, is it Facebook again?
Videos, you're talking about?
Yeah, another thousand dollars for promotion.
Yeah, that, those were for three videos we did, they got massive amounts of views on social media.
I don't care about views, did we get any responses?
Yeah, we got responses, a lot of positive discussion, a lot of exciting chatter, both locally and regionally. And this is best practice. By far, every marketing dollar that is used in this manner, short emotional videos pumped out to the free social media platform is by far the strongest rate of return for Buchanan or any city for that matter in terms of rate of return on investment. I remain, the work is phenomenal, I don't know if you guys have seen it. This, this last video was pretty cool because we were able to use Tom Petty's American Girl song to capture the energy of the Buchanan Memorial Day Parade. So, I think it really showed, showed well, as well as the farmer's market. We had an amazing little video on McCoy's Creek Tavern that I think captured the downtown vibe and kind of the distinct persona of Buchanan. If you watch that video, everybody wants to go in and have a drink there in this cool little watering hole in downtown Buchanan. So, I could not speak highly, more highly of this gentleman we're working with. Ben Sasp, extremely talented, understands the Buchanan vibe and continues to pump out amazing work. So, I, a thousand bucks, we'll get it back.
Advantage, much as I don't know about videos, I know the price isn't bad for each of those videos. You know, they're like three or four hundred dollars a piece, which I think is a real good price.
Well, the only problem I have, the only reason why, you know, we talk about economic development, we don't wrap our arms around the marijuana people, we don't wrap our arms around the million-dollar antique dealers, and, you know, buying a beer at McCoy's Creek really isn't gonna help economic development. You drive south of the border and they're tearing it up down there. And I know Indiana and Michigan are very competitive or not competitive at all, but what do we need to do different?
Well, here, here's the thing about what we're doing here is it, it's a marketing method in which you use small business to build a larger story. And so, it's really not about buying a beer, it's about creating this exciting downtown environment for locals and visitors because you're using the poster children of these small business people and you're saying, you know, we're working the symphony here. So, we've got great parades, we've got great restaurants, we've got little watering holes, we've got concerts. And so, you just put that on autopilot and it very effectively brands Buchanan, and it's working. There's no question, talk to anybody in Marion County, they know there's energy in Buchanan, they see it, they feel it, they admire the work we're doing, they wanna know who we're working with constantly, who are you working with? They're doing a great job, they're doing a great job.
Why don't we wrap our arms around the people that are paying the most tax? I mean, why don't we accept the marijuana people? I mean, and I would really like for you to email me a copy of that book that you're getting your economic development from because I'd like to read it because I sincerely disagree with it.
Yeah.
Even though I've been told I have no economic development powers or knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I, all I can say is on a daily basis, here's the message I hear. Buchanan's the hottest real estate in Marion County right now, and everybody's looking at Buchanan. It's just, talk to anybody, talk to real estate agents, talk to people. We gotta, we have old buildings coming alive with multimillion-dollar investments, we have the state stepping up.
Where's the multimillion-dollar investment you're talking about?
The McCullum Livery, state of Michigan as a partner. They don't choose things out of a hat to back up, they choose downtown epicenter game-changing projects because you're competing with the entire state. We won the best grant possible because the developers put in two years of work and because the city backed it up. So, I mean, I, I don't know what you're hearing, I can tell you the vibe I'm hearing. We just need to keep the pedal on the metal and what we're doing is working.
I mean, in today's climate, you know, the number one thing we have to remember is that we're coming from a generation that print was the way to go, everything was in print, right? Everything was in newspaper, everything needed, the tangibility of a thousand dollars was, was felt through the paper you held in your hand and it made sense, right? It had something that was quantifiable.
Unfortunately, we live in a world today where thirty-second videos are key. If you're not current with what's happening in the social media, if you don't believe that YouTube has significance, I beg you to run any calculator on a social influencer's income compared to yours. And I guarantee an individual who has two million followers has much more influence than any of us in this room. And their bankroll is far greater, so the minute that they have anybody, somebody like Hannah Roberts, the significance of a hashtag with Hannah Roberts in the TikTok world, in the X world, in the Facebook world, it doesn't matter, that thousand dollars is nothing. But it's a drop in the bucket if something like Hannah Roberts wins gold, everything you did for that thousand dollars now associates back to that video. And then you're not gonna have to, you can't supply him with a quantifiable Excel spreadsheet that shows the pull-through sales, that's not the design of this. We're not in the world of business for pull-through sales, but the businesses will feel it, I guarantee it, so just stand by. Understand that thousand dollars?
Hannah Roberts.
Yeah, the thousand dollars could have been print for a year for all these articles that you did in a month, right? So, I get his apprehension, but the world of videos is exactly where it needs to be, and if you're not paying attention, you're gonna be left behind. Tree friends, you guys, if you had a flyover of everything that was impactful to why trees are important, far greater impact than an article.
It would be interesting what our aerial tree canopy is from now and like ten years from now.
Yeah, so, I mean, this.
I'm gonna try and rein us back in if I can, do we have any other expenditures?
No, no. I move to approve the expenditures in the amount of eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving down to communications, Mr. Lynch.
Oh, but I was gonna do that in my city manager comment.
Oh, you were, okay. All right, let's move down to public comment then on non-agenda, sorry, non-agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name and minutes.
Hi, I'm Rob Solvig at four-two-four Fulton Street. I'm up here today because Cota ordinances, it's come to my knowledge that the Cota ordinances here in Buchanan are all misrepresented with an untitled misdemeanor. Which is kind of, I mean, it sounds like Buchanan is really more intent on creating criminals rather than creating a public service with using the police department, unfortunately. The civil violation fines in place right now that I could find were for moving violations for your vehicle, for dumping in the sewer, which should be a criminal charge in my opinion, and stealing cable, everything else is considered a misdemeanor charge, and it's an untitled misdemeanor charge the way it's written in the ordinances. What I also found out that the prosecutor's attorney, every time there's one of these offenses that has been generated, you guys have to pay him a hundred and twenty-five dollars to see if it goes through the court system. Well, somebody like me that doesn't have any income right now, then I have to rely on, unfortunately, the court system's attorneys, and that costs the state more money. So, if this was to be changed into a civil violation, that would be a money generator for the city, for somebody jaywalking or somebody trespassing rather than getting an actual criminal charge put against them and they have to go through the whole court system. Which is, you know, if you guys are looking for revenue, you can do that with civil fines pretty easily. I mean, I don't know how much revenue would be generated from a civil fine, it probably would depend on the offense. And also, it, you know, there's a little more protection for the police too, because every time I see an officer at my house, I'm expecting to get arrested at this point. With my past, you know, I've never had a criminal record until I moved to Buchanan, and I've had seven different criminal accusations on my life since I've been here, two of them which have stuck. You know, I'm not a perfect citizen, but a lot of this could have been alleviated with fines. I mean, the people around my neighborhood actually have threatened me and nothing has happened to those people. I mean, granted, you know, they were actually breaking the law, but for some reason, they got some kind of connection in this city where they weren't tied with criminal charges like I was. Unfortunately, you know, that, that happens, and I think this would actually help the city generate some revenue and actually, you know, create less criminal charges on people across the state ultimately. I mean, life isn't meant to be criminals, I mean, we're all, we all do stupid things on occasion, but, you know, to get reprimanded as a criminal over something stupid is a little bit over the top. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Richard Martin, nine-twenty Chippewa, I just forgot to do this earlier, so I figured this would be the forum. I need a key to get into the dog park, when I go up to water trees, I gotta carry five-gallon buckets into the park, and I've been unable to get a key to the dog park. I was told to check with the man who mows the lawn up there, and he gave me some keys that I think this is one of them, and I went and had them made, and it was none of them. So, I'm just wondering, what can I do to get a key to the dog park?
Why is he handing out keys?
I don't know.
Why is that gate still closed?
Because of the dogs.
No, I mean.
No, in, in the dog park itself, not, not access.
You're inside the dog park, is what you're talking, you need to get in there to water down the trees.
So, why is the dog park locked up?
Because of the dogs, they would get out if they weren't locked up.
There's a different style of entrance.
He's talking about a bigger gate.
You're talking about the big gates, they drive your truck in there with the water trailer.
Correct.
Right, you can water with the.
Mike, do you have keys to that?
I, I'm sure I do, yes, I will find them tomorrow.
There you go.
Well, I mean, it was open for a while and now it's closed again, it was open for the baseball association, softball association.
I don't think having, having a gate like that locked, because you might get somebody up there just doing donuts like they do everywhere else, you know, I mean.
It's not supposed to be open at least until the building is complete with all the construction going on. But we can't seem to keep it closed and locked and people out of it, they go through, I'd rather them drive that way than go down the trail like they do, it's just dangerous. People are just ridiculous that they can't walk under there.
If you can help get him a key so he can get in and water the trees so that that investment doesn't get ruined, I appreciate it.
Well, we're gonna take care of it.
And please ask your employees not to just hand their keys out.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, city manager?
Sean, maybe I should have done that during communications, second thought. Okay, here's my public service announcement, today I reported a sanitary sewer overflow into McCoy Creek in the city limits. The overflow was determined and confirmed at approximately eleven-thirty a.m. this morning, July eighth, twenty-twenty-four. The location of the overflow is near Third Street and Dewey in the city. The source appears to be the influence sewer slash interceptor to the Buchanan wastewater treatment plant. This line is slated for replacement in the upcoming project that we passed all the loans and resolutions for tonight. The overflow is ongoing and remedies to fully correct the matter are being explored. Initially, we will initiate bypass pumping to prevent the overflow from entering the creek. Equipment should begin to arrive as soon as tomorrow morning to address this. As is our obligation, Michigan Eagle has been notified as well as the Marion County Health Department and local media. The health department is working with the city in performing sampling and analysis of the creek waters in the impacted area. The creek area adjacent to the overflow has been posted to prevent human contact and recreation until further notice. And we will strive to correct this issue in a prudent and expedited manner, and we're working on it right now.
Did we apologize to the fish?
I'm just, should we put some signs further down the creek for people who might be fishing down, down in the bottom of, behind Clark Testing or Clark Labs down there? Do you think, or no?
Well, when I talked to the health department, they said you don't have to post the signs too far down the way, but if you feel that would alleviate.
Well, I know that people go, do go down in there and go fishing down in the really lower parts of the creek down in there, and I just think it might, it's probably a good thing if we put some signs down there on the trail.
Sure, hopefully we'll get it resolved here real quick though.
Yeah.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Christopher Whedon?
I'm good.
Mr. Swam?
I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Bianski?
I've got a list, first and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the taxpayers for the three-hundred-thousand-dollar investment into Victory Park Pavilion. I had talked individually and previously about putting some teeth in Tim's contract, I'd like to know if that's gone anywhere, if the lawyers reached out back to us? If the lawyer was gonna reach out back to us, has the lawyer said anything to you, or was he not totally instructed to do that? I would like to instruct him to put some teeth back into your contract if I can do that then, I guess I should have brought it up earlier, but I'll bring it up at the next meeting. Larry seems to be working on the cemetery, we're moving ahead with that, I went up there and looked at the glass, he's talking to people. The concerts on Sunday and Saturday, they were absolutely fantastic. I really hate to go on this, but it doesn't seem like we have too many weed whackers employed, they don't weed whack underneath the picnic tables. They're only doing part of the cemetery, the cemetery's looks worse now than I believe it ever has. We don't have very much code enforcement, even though we have a code enforcement officer. And then I did talk to Tim about, and I talked to all you guys, that house on Hillview, if anybody knows who owned that house on Hillview that they just tore down. I didn't think to call Guy today, but I will find out from Guy, they tore down a house on Hillview, and I'm very happy because I had sent it to Tim and I thought Tim had really got on it, because it was only three weeks ago and it's gone now, so whoever did it, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Mike?
Yeah, as far as the cemetery project goes, we've had Mary, Mary and I went out and looked at that stained glass. She gave me a couple ideas with names, she's gonna pursue those and talk to you about that. There are some people that she may know that can handle a project like that. The cemetery crew opened up the building, went out and looked at it, it's just colored glass with lead in it, in my eyes, but Mary pointed out a few different things. So, I kind of know what I'm looking at now, so, yeah, that project is ongoing, I have been in touch with Mr. Fleming. And as his schedule gets, gets around, the doors on the chapel are gonna be taken care of and gonna have to talk to Mike about blocking some of that up. Once again, as Dan mentioned, the concert series downtown along with the Red Bud this weekend, a lot of activity in the city of Buchanan. I know that there's just a lot of things going on, and thank you to Harvey and all his people for their diligence. And like I said, it was, it was a good Fourth of July weekend, so thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate the Richies on a successful Red Bud, there was a ton of people here and from all reports, it was a really good weekend. Their camping was full and sent the overflow up to Marion County Youth Fair to camp, so they definitely had a lot of people here. I wanted to congratulate Hannah Roberts on another accomplishment, winning the X Games, the first female to do so, so congratulations to her. I wanted to congratulate the library and Lib Buchanan on their art installation, I think it turned out wonderfully. And it's pretty amazing what happens when you turn that corner there and it's like, it's huge and bright and looks tremendous. And I'd like to thank Tim again, I'd like to thank everybody in City Hall for, for doing what they do, but specifically with the day he's had today, I'd like to thank Tim for being on top of things and knowing exactly how to handle situations like that. Again, you're, you make us very happy that you're sitting where you're sitting, so thank you. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Can we have roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Your adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.